The last. It is seven oh one, or I will call the meeting to order. We need to add the Cambridge Mutual Aid Agreement to the agenda, which everyone has, and there's some bend or changes that we need to make to that.
Do you want to do that housekeeping first?
We will.
So I'll make a motion.
To the agenda person, then we'll do the house.
I'll make a motion to add the mutual aid agreement in under five dot three for discussion.
I'll second that. Motion made by Matt and seconded by Karen to add the mutual aid agreement between Arlington and Cambridge, New York for the mutual aid to the agenda. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Two adds. All right, so the housekeeping that we need to do, since we have a newly appointed member of the select board, Karen is our newest member.
And also Karen.
We need to formally welcome you, and also we need to assign, since Cynthia was the vice chair prior, we're going to reorganize and two new vice chair and two new liaisons, because you were liaison for water and
Administration.
At the admin in the building. Like the gophers and higher offices in the building. So.
But I think it would make sense for Karen to continue with the same liaison positions of water and admin.
That's my thinking.
I think you know everybody in town hall anyways, and so are you familiar with what the liaison position does? Okay, so as a liaison between the select board and the employees or departments within town hall or within the town.
Treasurer, Lester, the senior administrator. Secretary.
Secretary, employees not elected officials, but employees hired. And we do that for water department as well, which is Josh, and that's departmental, and then we also have highway and fire department and ref and our liaisons as well.
Administration.
Yeah, and so if those employees want to have a discussion about something outside of a select board meeting, they can come to you, and then you can check in periodically. Something that we've talked about in the future too is kind of doing this every once in a while or so, just on progress of any projects or things within those departments. We haven't actually been there yet, but I'm on, I'm water and fire department. So I go to fire department meetings and there's the water commissioners and I just check in with Josh. So it really just required to be checking people's paperwork that's going, you know, and I check into Josh a little bit more with projects right now, but other times he's pretty self-sufficient and knows to call me or text me and he's got a lot.
So you're on water and I'm also getting?
Yes, so there's two select boards where I reset it is.
And I'm also on admin. Okay, but I'm on highway then.
Okay, so we can mentor you and get you up to speed.
Perfect.
Super fast.
Perfect.
That would be my proposal, if you're in agreement with that from the liaison perspective.
Yep, I'm in agreement with that, and those are good. Get your feet wet.
Yes, and they're right in the building, they're.
They're not complicated, they're not monogamous.
There's never any issues with that, so it's.
No, that's fine.
Good place to stand.
No, it's a place to learn. Yep, exactly. So.
And then the vice chair, I don't know what your thoughts on that, I'm happy to do, I've done it in the past, so I'm also happy to take that as a vice chair.
Thinking as well, so just because you've done before and it's logical, so. But we can do those two as two individual.
I'm gonna make them as two individual motions, because there's only three of us here.
Yep.
So I'll make a.
I'll make a motion for vice chair. So you go ahead with.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Karen to liaison for water and admin.
I will second that. Motion's made by Matt and seconded by myself to have Karen take on the positions of liaison for water and liaison for admin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and then I will make a motion to nominate Matt to the vice chairmanship of the board. And I will second that. Motion made by myself and seconded by Karen to have Matt be the vice chair of the board. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we're down to minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting as presented.
I'll second that. Motion made by Matt and seconded by Karen to approve minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we.
Can I interrupt? Yes. Did Karen vote on the minutes of the last meeting, if she wasn't a member of that meeting?
I believe so.
Technically she can, as long as she re-mutes.
I re-mute them, yeah. Some people, no, some people control because they weren't at that meeting, even though they may have been. They opt not to, but I don't think it's a problem.
I have a problem with that.
Yep.
Yeah, no, that's a good call.
It is.
I think sometimes when there's, we're tied on forum too, just, but I don't, I think we've researched this in the past, so there was no specific rule that says that you cannot, as long as you.
Thing, not an actual legal thing. All right, public comments are the next item on the agenda.
Best part of the meeting, because I have been.
We've already taken care of the housekeeping, and there was a couple of people in the room I know that wanted to say a few things.
I think this gentleman here has that.
Okay, go ahead.
Other people were here before, I certainly.
I'm just gonna go left or right.
Okay, my name is Lee Ullman, I'm a resident of Arlington, I live over on Burr Wall. I haven't attended a town meeting until now, and I've been remiss in that way, but in the last several months, in the last six months, I guess it appears that a problem has arisen, and the problem has to do with, I think, the maintenance of the roads, and I, several months ago, when Robin was the secretary downstairs, I called in with a specific complaint about a tree that had fallen on Burr Wall and a very untimely response to removing the tree. And it wasn't a big deal, this was like almost a year ago now, but it was about six months before the tree that was jutting out, part of the limb jutting out into Burr Wall, before somebody came and removed that. And I reported that tree, and I had myself and my neighbor remove the tree from the road, what the power company didn't take out, we in turn moved the next day, so six months later, I'm complaining about it, and six months later, the the tree is finally removed. That was just sort of the start of my angst, and since that time, just my road along, it seems like it has not been maintained in the fashion that it was maintained when I'm blocking on the gentleman's name, I know his first name is Gary, when Gary was in charge of the highway department. I found him to be kind of a difficult, irascible guy, but a very hard worker who did a really good job. I won't tell you any stories about Gary, but I found him to be very responsive, and I found him to do really good work. Since that time, I just haven't found the highway department to be as responsive. I haven't called anybody directly at the highway department, I don't, you know, I don't think we're supposed to call there, I've called the clerk a couple of times about problems, and there's been no response. And what was, what's been most troubling in the last week or two, the road grader came up the road, and it came up the road through the, I believe through the second rise in the road, and then it stopped, no more grading of the road. The road grader sat by the fire department for a week or so, and I thought, well, they're gonna come back and they're gonna grade the rest of the road, there are some ruts and everything. Reflectors have been knocked down, the ditches along the road have not been maintained in at least a couple of years, and I've known, I've seen contractors dump garbage in the ditches, so when we do finally have rain and when we do finally have snow, I'm concerned that there may be flooding, part of the road may be washed out, et cetera. So I guess I don't know who to bring these complaints to. In this whole process of kind of watching what's going on, I even saw a truck from, and again, I'm new to Vermont, I'm not a Vermont native, I've only been here about eight years now, but there was a highway department truck from, I mean, do we have an agreement with White Creek to send trucks over, or do we work with White Creek, because there was a White Creek truck on my road when the grader was there, so. I mean, I guess I just have a lot of concerns about the highway department, it just doesn't seem like my road is being maintained. I don't know what's going on in the rest of the town, I'm just speaking for Burr Wall. And I don't, I, although some of my fellow residents on Burr Wall are not here tonight, there are several people in Burr Wall that I've had this conversation with, and they're all in agreement with me, and if you'd like them to come to the meeting, they're prepared to come in future meetings. And then finally, thank you very much for listening to this. Again, as I said earlier, I've been remiss in not coming to these meetings. I plan to come to meetings in future, because if I'm gonna complain about things, you know, I want to get to know you folks, and I want to be part of the, hopefully, the solution. So those are my questions, I don't expect necessarily a comment or a response today, I'd be more than happy to come back to future meetings and.
Well, I really appreciate you coming in and bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
We will have to look into that, and we'll be able to get, our town administrator Cynthia can get in contact with you and give you some answers, and really, either the selectman's office Janet or the town administrator Cynthia are the right people to call if you need something you believe needs to be looked at or have some attention.
An ASAP kind of thing.
Right, so the town clerk's office is, and that's likely where the disconnect happened, it's staff slightly differed hours, and they have a lot of other things coming in, so if they, and there was a change in personnel, elected clerk this past year, so. Could understand, could understand how that may have fallen through the cracks, while it's not an excuse for not getting back to you, we do apologize for that, I think Cynthia and Janet in the selectman's office are the best people.
Proper first place.
Thank you for your kind response, I appreciate that, you're educating me as well right now.
And to your other, answer to one of your other questions that we can give you today is that, yes, we do have like mutual incline service agreements that with surrounding towns, so sometimes, and I don't know about this particular incident or anything, but there are occasions where we help out Sunderland or Shaftesbury, and then they come and help us and other towns.
Yeah, we helped out.
We help out with them sometimes, yeah. Yeah, we try to be good neighbors and help people when they're down a truck or personnel, and they've got a grant or project that wants to close out.
Yeah, that I can certainly understand.
Yeah, so, you know, there's no official agreement, but we kind of, we're good neighbors and we'll help each other out, so.
And if you just happen to be here a night from the road, there's also.
Lee, hi Mark. Can I just, very, a very nice guy, but I still, my issues are still there.
And I understand your issue, and I want to comment, just, just to explain, to make it, the tree thing, I don't remember, I remember something vaguely about a tree, but but the gravel part, when I put gravel on the, that first turn, I want to put gravel all the way up through beyond your house, but we ran out. So the place in Murray Hollow that I tried, they were completely out, and my stockpile of HBH was completely out. And it's been so dry, I wanted to grade up by your house, but it's been so dry, I don't dare touch the roads unless they really because when you, when you grade, when it's this dry, I've even been putting water on the ones that really needed the worst. But sometime before winter, I do plan on getting some more gravel beyond.
What about the ditches though, because they are completely overgrown.
I know they're, they're, they've got grass and stuff, but one of the issues with that is, and we were there a couple of years ago, and it's, and it takes like three years to get back around, because we got so many back roads that need ditching. No, I'm just, you know.
No, I'm just saying, contractors were dumping stuff in the ditch.
See, I didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, and.
Dumping filler or dumping trash?
Uh, it looks like dumping roots from trees and stuff like that, the ditch, and I'm just speaking specifically in front of my house, but the the ditches all the way down the road are overgrown, but near my house, some contractor, it looks like dumped some tree stumps and other things in the ditches.
You shouldn't be doing that.
I, I.
That would be even worse.
Well, I, I, I looked at it, and it's like, whoa, what's that about, and then afterwards, I'm walking the dog and I see it, and it's like, oh, yeah. But it's, it's gonna be a problem.
They shouldn't be doing that.
We can take a look to make sure that there's no foreign material that was dumped in the ditches.
I'll take the wootie there.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, I never really go far up Burr Wall Road past the fire department, so I'll have to go take a.
Why not?
And look.
We're a wonderful area.
I don't know, I will go take a drive and check it out.
It's, it's, it's between myself and, everybody I think knows Jim Raposa, it's between our houses across the street.
Okay.
Well, thank you for very much.
Thank you for listening, I appreciate that, and I, and your next meeting is two weeks.
Generally, they were two weeks, but the calendar is.
It's the twenty.
Okay, if my wife doesn't have other plans for me, I'll come back.
Okay, and we do, we do do the Zoom, and I will follow you.
And you're welcome.
No, I'd rather be here. I wouldn't know my government here, so I'll be back.
Okay. Thank you for coming in. Don, you're next.
Well, I was really waiting for Tim Williams to make his presentation. Tim, I gather, is gonna make a presentation about possibility of asking you to put on the agenda for your next meeting to repair the sidewalk just to the north of the town hall here, all the way to the beginning of the Arlington Inn. It's in terrible shape, as most of you know, and it was in bad shape for many people during Norman's attic. Particularly folks who were on walkers, and in fact, some of us had to help out people to navigate it, and so I don't want to steal Tim's thunder, he's gonna make a request that you put on into this year, this, the budget for the next fiscal year, the repair of that sidewalk. Rather than.
This, this is already on the list that I'm gonna be suggesting to the board, repair that sidewalk, and also making sure that the church tree sidewalk is not having any deterioration, because I think it's in really good shape compared to this one, but you gotta keep after it and not let the water start pooling, but repairing this sidewalk is on the list of projects that I'm gonna be suggesting to the board for next year. We have all the marble pieces, I have them stacked in the back, so we can definitely, you know, we have marble, and that's the key thing. But I, I think it's, I think the only, my only question is whether we should, I think we need to do it right away, I don't know when the seven A sidewalk to the ref park is gonna happen, because then we'd have a whole thing, but I agree with you, it's terrible.
Because I was recalling that some of this repair was gonna be part of that seven A sidewalk.
But I guess I'll check and find out if that is really gonna happen next year, because obviously, any work is gonna be next year anyway. If that is really gonna happen next year, then that's fine, we can do it all as one, but if something delays that again, we have, we have to do that. I totally.
Because I, I suggested this two years ago, all that, all the work.
Yeah. Oh, no, we know that.
It's horrible.
We know that, and the seventy sidewalk to the ref park has kind of been put off a little bit, you know, and, and so that work has been delayed too, but I agree with you, I agree with Tim, I mean, we're not stealing his thunder, because we.
Well, I'm backing up to, before I was even off the board, I remember that conversation about repairing the sidewalk, and I thought it was part of that seven A project.
And that's what I was told.
Okay.
Well, the, but I mean, there's a petition being signed by a number of folks, I, I signed it, a number of other people have, but I guess Cynthia has updated me, to get it into the budget, or setting that aside. Now I'm gonna speak for myself, right, for our town to be two hundred and fifty years old, or two hundred and sixty years old, to have a sidewalk in front of our town hall in that condition, with all the events that we are having in town now, to be, to be, and not unsightly, but dangerous, I, I think you should, it should be a priority, and if you have the material, I think we have enough folks around this town who can lay that out and get that section between the town hall and the Arlington Inn, and get it done right now, before winter, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm not putting on my developers hat too, I mean, I'd be appalled if I had a development where the interest in development looked like what we have out here. It, it, it really speaks badly for the town of Arlington, that all of us walk by it every day, and this is what we have, and well, let's just wait till next year. I mean, it's, and it's dangerous, and the other thing, it's inconvenient for a number of people who are, you know, not, you know, very stable on their feet, and then as Tim was saying during Norman's attic, three or four people with walkers just couldn't navigate it. That shouldn't be in our town in twenty twenty-five, that's all I'm saying. So I would urge you, if you could, you know, see if you, you know, we got concrete we could put down till first week of December, right, but if we can get that thing done, that section, forget about the.
Yeah, no, I, but I think that's probably why it got kicked down the road, that it's, I think that's probably why the repair got kicked down the road, even though it's not an answer or an excuse, I'm just surmising that that's probably why, because Mark's memory is jiving with mine.
Absolutely, I'm sure that's true, I'm sure, but we thought that project would have already happened. Also, I do think that in the past year, the falling part of the sidewalk, the sidewalk has suddenly accelerated, because they're, you know, so, so it wasn't, it was already bad, it already needed work, but now it has graduated to unsightly and unsightly.
I know as a builder, as a real estate developer, if I built a project in town, and we built a couple, if we left our sidewalk in that condition, your building department, everyone else, the planning department, would be all over us, and so why not, you know, set the example ourselves and get this thing done, and so it'd be great if you could put it on the agenda for the, being on the twentieth, that's what your plans are, and so. It would be helpful to a lot of other people to know that you are tackling the problem, okay?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don.
And thank you, again, thank you for your service.
We don't have a ton of the sidewalk sinking front either. We've got six K in there. Yeah, we've got six K in there, there's probably that concrete. By today's process.
Is there any concrete in there?
It's usually laid on a concrete base. Those marble slabs are, and the pieces that we have are the full, or are they just all the little?
Puzzle pieces.
Puzzle pieces.
I've got, I've got more marble though, I've got it in my, in my shed, I've got marble, I've got a lot of marble.
Marble, she's a marble floor slippery.
Yo, we treat it by acid, we treat it with acid.
Yeah, they treat it, and it gets, it's still a little slippery, but if you look at them in Man, I love, and I know we're not Manchester, but in Manchester, they use the full size in each of the, right, because the developers that are doing those new spaces, and I drive by almost every other day and watch them laying the beautiful sidewalk down, it's like.
You remember the board, who's an expert on the subject, so.
Yeah.
Tap.
But we can get that, do a little investigation and put it out for the next.
Thank you.
Meeting.
Fred, you're up next.
Well, I got this letter from Cynthia in the mail, says that I had to take my fence down by the river, and when I put the fence up, Keith Squires came down, looked at it, and I was told I couldn't put a fence on the other side, I could leave that fence there, so I don't understand.
The other side meeting with the upper side of the road.
No, he started about the upstream side.
So I understand there's something going on at the covered bridge, and you guys are starting to enforce or whatever, but what I'm saying is, I had permission from the town, so I don't understand what this is about.
Well, we have, yeah, go ahead.
So, so I met with Mr. Pickering today, and I have consulted the attorney, and as I told him, the board has learned that the highway right of way next to the bridges, just like next to the roads, includes the public's right to walk along the edge of the road or to walk down into the river, so it includes the public right of access, and I did not have that information from a lawyer in that form before. I absolutely agree with Mr. Pickering that in the past, the chair of the select board told him that the fencing he did on the downstream side was okay, but I have not found a record of any kind of highway right of way, and Mr. Pickering does not recall a permit, a right of way permit. So while I understand that a past board may have asked in that fencing legislative bodies do sometimes adjust their position when they have new information, and so I wonder if that's what the situation is. I have given Mr. Pickering excerpts of the information from our lawyer governing highway right of way, the river, and agriculture, because of the agricultural use. I am not totally sure exactly how everything, particularly the agricultural situation, applies to his situation. So I'm going to query the attorney further about this situation and try to resolve it, but I have given Mr. Pickering all the citations, so that at least he knows what we're working from, and, and then we can try and forward and visit this in the future.
And then the other question I have is, across the road, the farmer is the same way with me, he has a fence that goes right up to the area, and I don't understand the difference.
Well, I think the difference.
You tried to tell me that he has cows, I have cows, so I don't understand.
Okay, so the difference that I would see, and first of all, the town the town enforces situations on a case by case basis, so what other people do isn't always relative to a particular case. But my impression is that because the cows have been there continuously, and because his fences actually do not block access to the river, because people can climb down the abutment and go in, that that has not been a situation that the town has chosen to address. Your fence was specifically put up to block public access to the river, and the cattle that you put there were put there specifically to justify the fence, block the public access, and we know that, and we understood that, and we understood your situation at that time, speaking of.
The town gave me permission to do it.
And that's right.
Okay.
But in the absence.
Now you're asking me to take the fence down, open it up, and have all the riprap, beer bottles, diapers, everything come back, and that's not gonna happen.
I think that in the absence of a record of official permits, this situation needs to be addressed. It may be possible for you to get a permit for that fence, and I think that would be what I would suggest.
Why didn't the town give me a permit when they told me I could do it?
I can't speak to that.
I'm just saying, it's been fifteen years, and now the can of worms opened, and I'm thrown right into the center of it, when I had permission from the town, is what I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
I, and I understand that, but as I said, when a legislative body gets new information, they sometimes need to change their behavior, and, and I think this is one of those situations, and I would encourage you with the memo that I have, and the board will continue to discuss that, and we'll have it back at a future, at a future meeting.
So I think, Dan, it sounds like we can just double check on our side, and also be my recommendation that we just have legal counsel and get a final determination on that, given the whole series of events and everything that we just discussed with counsel and get a final, on what the path forward is on that.
Yeah, I think that's sound, and what, what you will practice, so you know, nobody on this board supports. nobody on this board supports individual rights properly than I do. And we are trying to balance how we address right of way issues.
No, I understand that, a hundred percent.
You know, we're we're not gonna rush in to rush to judgment, but we're trying to determine this. And if there's, in in that, as I understand it, an absence of deeds language that says that X, Y, and Z is here, this is why, or whatever, if it's not indeed, there's a longstanding state statute that says here on that class road, it's a twenty-five feet from center line.
Correct.
That did right away, and again, at some point in not-too-distant future, we hope to reopen that bridge, which means basically we don't.
And also, we're gonna have to work on the abutments and the fencing.
And it will have to be more time, so we we need to establish where, what area we need to get to, and that's right, basically. But that's, this is a work in progress, so we're not there yet. Um but I just, I just think we need to uh press our keys and honorize and make sure we know what we're doing well ahead of that remodel.
All right.
And uh so it means moving the fence slightly or whatever, we don't want to take, want you to take down not the other things, hey, the cows.
Just so you know, I have to move the fence, I'm putting the fence up on both sides on my property, period. Because it just, it's bringing all kinds of, just because I live by a bridge doesn't mean it can run all over my property. So I'm not gonna let that happen. Um I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
So my road's been closed for two or three years now, for the bridge, um what about the maintenance side?
It's still a town road.
Is it supposed to be grading?
It is, and they haven't been there.
Okay, that's all I'm at, there's two, there's two potholes that are like five feet, four and a half feet, and it's been that way for three years, I usually don't, I'm just saying, I I don't understand.
It's still a town road, we still are, we will maintain it, we will, so.
All right, thank you.
So uh, yeah, it's, like I said, it's a work in progress, and we will tread softly and do the least available in basic work that we have to do, but uh
Well, I think if you're gonna do the abutment and fix it, you ought to address it where they have a place to actually walk in, because right now there's stumps, Cynthia knows there's a water bucket washed out down there, you can't walk to it. So the people, they come down, they see that before the fence went up, and if you look to the right, there's a hole. It's like thirty feet in diameter, it's washed out, everybody come in and go down, and then they leave all their garbage.
And I'm sure that got worse after I went.
Well, it looks good now, the trees of wild roses underneath it, it looks good.
It was well worn and it was quite a
Yeah, and the garbage.
Food trail, well, people just access it, so my kids swim there, other kids swim there, it was a popular place.
Well, they still swim.
Yeah. Jump off the bridge.
Sounds like they're gonna do it.
We're gonna talk to the council, see if there's a way to come to a happy medium around when we do the work on the bridge too. Right, or start work there, you should just ask them all about that.
Okay.
Okay.
But thank you for coming in and the, you know, address the order and get your concerns, and we take them serious.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I just ask a question about that, because I've been curious, um we walk our dogs over on River Road, and so we're over there a lot. When is that bridge going to be repaired? Because with the rain tree out there.
We were this close to doing it, and the state historical people, they didn't acknowledge it, they said, I gotta do this, I gotta do we gotta have this stuff, we gotta do all of this stuff, so.
It's a historical structure.
It's a historical structure in the sense that that was one of the few of that style of a building. So they got their nets on it and just ground right through the halt and uh at the time that that happened, we had some funding set up for it, and it wasn't all there, but depending on some grants and stuff, but.
I mean, it seems like this city is working your cross purposes with you, because fire protection for people on River Road is much delayed and so for historical purpose, I don't know, priorities seem to be skewed up.
Fire trucks can't get across that bridge, I don't believe.
No, they couldn't go across that bridge anyways.
So it's not fire protection, it's not, it's not gonna use that bridge, but we
Convenience, for sure.
But what the board determined last year was that we want to replace existing bridge with a single lane, concrete deck bridge on existing abutments. The problem is, it's gonna cost so much money, and we don't have the money. So in the process of trying to save up the money, because we don't like to borrow money, and there's not a lot of state money.
Well, I thought it was state money that was going to that bridge, it's town of Arlington.
That's never realized the process.
And because see, one of the things is, it's one of four bridges, so it's not like it's a situation where it's the only bridge that gives access. We think it's a very important element to transportation, and that's borne out by the fact that after tropical storm Irene, it was the only bridge that was open, because its parts of the other access points had been washed out. So we think it's important to have those multiple bridges, but because it's not the only access, it's not kind of qualified for big funding, so we have to save up for it. So right now, to my mind, the last time the board addressed it, it's a question of saving up the money and keeping ahead of inflation.
Yep. So anyway, it's it's not the answer anybody wants to hear, including us.
Yeah.
But because that happened, and it it just put a drag on the whole thing, and publicly funding it at a much broader level became a non option, and that's a shame. But at any rate, it's, at some point, well, I I probably won't see it, but at some point in the near future, I'm saying in five years is a pretty short window. But I I can't say that it's gonna happen in five years.
If you're not gonna see it, I'm certainly not gonna see it then.
I think it's just a good walking path.
But that one, ironically, every bridge with Dan, with Irene, including that one, and that one we all know, still passed, blown safe. But they did floor testing in the in the timbers and everything, and it's robed true and has dropped two inches on one side, and it's just, it's not, we we were gonna try to, it's been rehabbed some of the time, but there's no band-aid, doesn't fix it then. So anyway, that's that's where it stands, and it's it's a shame, but it's wood, and wood rocks. So, all right. So is there any other public comments? Anybody on the call that is the Did Ally uh
She asked, she asked me a question, and I answered it.
Okay. All right. I didn't see her, I just, no, I saw
She was here.
Came quickly through.
All right, so uh we're under section five, town of Arlington departments, highway department, project updates.
You're on, Mark. Well, Peckham's had pushed me up, up three times, tell whether. Plan is they're gonna drop their equipment tomorrow and Wednesday.
This is the south.
So later Warren Brook, as long as it's not pouring Wednesday morning, they said they're doing a light rain, that they would start the reclamation, will probably end up taking three, we said around three days, might end up in the hole.
For grinding it, for for doing their, I call it roboting, but. They're grinding it, reconstituting it as a base.
Right. So I spoke with Dan, the salesman, this morning to make sure that we were still on, they were still waiting on permit, an overside permit to move the machine into Vermont. But then he texted me later, he said, oh, permits were set, it was going to not, so.
I saw the sign, you have the road post on, I didn't go to that.
Yeah, yeah.
One suggestion on that sign, can we put base on it, so people know?
It's a, yeah, it's kind of a universal sign, but yeah.
It's a universal sign, maybe a separate one with a
The little danglies that you have on the whole.
Right. Um We've been doing some pretty extensive work on Tory Lane Norm. Um I saw that green up the power is going to telephone poles for us, push them back, and all the wires except for consolidated have been moved. Well, now there's the last one there with the lumps, and once those are removed, there's three existing poles that are still right on the edge of the
They're home.
That will be pulled, and then I think we can set the road over about three feet. And then we'll be able to create a ditch on the left-hand side of the road to go up through, so we can extend it three tall bricks.
So that would be the downhill side?
Yeah, the the ditch will be on the downhill, the plain, um extending towers, all that, so. We raised part of River Road, so that now the water can get off the road, and we will Do you fix the aprons? Are you gonna try to fix anything? How that works.
I don't either.
I don't either. As I, when we had the rain, I had blood bubbles, four and two feet, and I didn't drive them away, so I didn't know when they when they paid, we, you know, fixed them off so that there's not a a jump, but other than that, I don't, I don't really know. I haven't run into that situation.
Yep.
Um So we raised part of River Road, part of Burwell, um because the water was running down the road now into the ditch, and it's the same way up by Lee's house, we just, we ran out of ground, so. Um Mr. Foster has more, now made, I just gotta get time to get there. I'll have to spend probably half Wednesday and the rest of the week with Peckham's, that we're doing the grading, that was part of the with you.
Yeah.
Um We got sixteen hundred ton of winter sand put up. And I don't think I'm gonna get a whole lot more right now, because right now I have, we have room to move around, if we get much more, we we won't have, so as we use the pile back and we just replenish through the um, but White Creek did help us with that, her, um, because in two days, we they with five trucks, with third, three, and our two, we put up sixteen hundred tons, so I was very, very happy with that.
That's nice.
Um, the John Deere backhoe has a transmission issue. Um It's over at United Construction and Forestry in Springfield. Um They The way they explained it to me is that there's screens inside of the transmission. Why they have remained these this way, and and they also agreed with me, why would you put a screen inside of a transmission that you had to take apart? But they're gonna have to take the transmission apart to see what's blocking the screen, and hopefully it's just wear items like clutch pack, something like that, and then they can replace whatever's wore out and put back, take it in. He, hopefully by the end of tomorrow, he said he'd get it inside and get started into it, so we can kind of have an idea what it's gonna cost to repair. So, and then let's start it.
Okay.
Um, I haven't really, like I said earlier, it's been so dry. When we tried to grade, I did some grading the week before we put the gravel on Burwell, and we used the chloride tank with straight water and watered the road beforehand, because when, as dry as it is, you know, once you go along, it it just makes powder, and then when you lay the powder out, it gets to chatter, you make chatter out of it, it helps some of the roads that we did, some of them were starting to chatter again.
You mean the the
The washboard, yeah, yeah. Um, when we've had powders dug up, it's, I mean, it's dry down four or five feet, right, I can test to that. It's super dry, so as soon as we get, we're supposed to get a little rain tomorrow night and Wednesday, depending on how much we get. Maybe we'll get a little bit, next week's supposed to rain, they're saying, chance of rain every day. So hopefully when that happens, we can get out and get some of the grading.
I have a question on bigger team, I know V-Trans is leaving some of the the brush ducts on the one side, are you involved with any of that? Are they gonna, do we have any say in how they leave it? I mean, it looks like it's awful.
Looks like, yeah.
That is the worst looking mess.
Isn't that the, isn't that the worst job you've ever seen?
I I I knew it wasn't the town, so I wasn't gonna, but I saw it.
That's what they're all doing, railroad, that's the most efficient, and it gets a dump.
I get that, but they should come back and just like
The labor involved there, be
I haven't been down one to
Oh, it's awful.
It's all stuff.
And just tore them out, tore the trees in half, like they look like broken toothpicks.
They use that machine that
They did that on
Buncher feller.
The new highway, a couple of years ago.
Um, I can, I can ask the highway guy, you know, is that how they plan, I mean, it's supposed to be a scenic, you know, front highway.
One one sick weather, it isn't, it really is obnoxious.
Exactly, give it a couple of months and rain.
And all the white fresh broken stuff will be
And all the sap.
From all, as long as they let stick six, seven, eight.
Okay, they grind them all the way down? Oh, no, they're just sticking up and
They never went up.
At least when we do it, we kind of, if we start at the top, we try to get all the bottom.
Because it's beautiful, I mean, the rock formation.
I'll go, I'll go take a look, I'll take a look.
It's really pretty, but they got it all like
Way just south of the Hype Point, a couple of years ago, to get that, and it looked like hell for about three months. And then we go by there, and you wouldn't even know they did it.
Yeah, I've been after the highway department because I've got dead trees, and I've been plowing them like every six months, because those trees are gonna fall right onto the road, and and Chris Tate, who who works with it, he's right across the street, I mean, Chris, your kids walk across the street all the time, you know? But we're getting to it.
It's just the way they they do it on this little menu. Unfortunately, it's it's some very unsightly mess to start.
Maybe, and maybe they're not done, maybe they'll come back and do something.
Well, their equipment is still there, it's in the turnout.
They may not have critics.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
But I I did
They're coming all in front of my my house, so I don't know how much further they're gonna go, but they have it on back and seeing those tall pieces. Yeah, around three thirteen.
Um
Right by, we're boarding around that area.
You got a lot of big pull off all the way.
Pull off from the scales pull off
Yeah.
To the last corner before French Road, turns, goes over the top there, comes up onto that for Pickering Hillas and all of that, but it's right on the right-hand side, the ledge, hang belt and all of the broken stuff. You can't miss it.
I'm gonna suggest to you. Yes, you're probably on the phone.
If I could just um let the board know, I believe I put this in my administrative report, um that the situation on River Road with the landowner who felt that the ridge of snow that gets piled up at the edge of her property is running down into her house, which is on this, below the slope, um our consultant, Mr. Robinson, I visited the site, I just it certainly, we certainly plowed a ridge of snow, and it melts, and it sinks into the ground or possibly runs off, but I just don't think it's running down directly into her house because of the lay of the land there, and there's actually a ridge before the slope down in her house, and all that snow would be there, whether, where we were plowing it. So I would like to write her a letter saying that, and um if she wishes, once we've plowed it, if she wishes to hire someone to move the snow, or she just move it back in the road, we all have to clear out our driveways and things like that, and so that's her prerogative. But I just don't see any chance that the major source of the problem is the the piled snow, it's just
Every mountain side bucket.
And if we didn't follow the snow, it would still be the same
It would still be on the ground, on the ground, it would still sink in. And and the real issue is that the slope comes down like this, and then there's the house with the foundation, so it's built on ledge rock, and it's on the side of the hill, so the water, the running down, and and the whatever amount of water is coming from the plow ridge, and I don't think it's going directly there, but even if it did, it would be literally a drop in the bucket compared to what's moving around on that hillside.
Well, and to Mark's point, I mean, the snow melt, it's not like it's all happens, like it instantly melts at once, and it would be the same amount whether
I mean, if it's the same amount of snow, it's just, we plowed it off the road, melts on the windrow on the edge of the road, right on, instead of
And they're not plowing it up against her fence right above the house, they're not doing that, and she may think she, that they're doing that, she's not here in the in the winter. So I just wanna write a note just saying that, um and and uh and we'll see what happens.
Okay, next, I have a five-point-two wreck part updates.
Thank you, thank you for telling me that.
Thank you.
Thank you. How are you doing? Um, Dorser. Wreck part, we got, um, the golf course is open now.
You know, the new, the new green.
The new greens are open and now the other few holes are being attacked by the groves, um, badly. So same as we were last year with this four, we're on to the next couple, there's two that are really bad, um. So I think we'll have to. Uh, talk to the park committee again in the future and say maybe it's time we. Do the other four, uh, hole seven is great, cause it's the island hole, there's water underneath it. Uh, you know, that thing looks like a. Equinox green most of the time when I get done cutting it, so. Um, that's done, um. We got, uh, Paige Williams came on Friday. Um, Josh seemed to believe and Paige did too, that we have too much pressure. Uh, in my office, uh, the hot water tank keeps blowing up. To the point like we're Thursday night, we had a game, uh, I left and I have a bucket underneath it, cause it'll just spew water out of it. There was nothing in it, next thing it's got two gallons of water that had blown out of it. A lot of that, what they call jackhammer, is when you shut the water off like in a woman's bathroom, the whole place just shakes. There's so much pressure there. Uh, he came in, he got, had ordered the wrong size pipe, he's gonna try and connect it in my office. So it'll take care of all the bathroom and a hot water tank, we gotta put. It's like a reducer. Uh, down, he thought he might get one for a three quarter pipe just to try and help the hot water tank, but. He didn't call back or didn't stop back, so then you hear that.
That was the pressure reducer we talked about putting just after the meter or before the meter.
Um.
In the pit there.
Up out of the pit, yep, and then it goes in because from there, that all gets connected through the walls. And goes out to the men's room, women's room. Um, so he, yeah, I didn't hear back from him and he was very, very, uh, upset with himself that he. He thought he saw the size on the valve and he ordered, or inch and a half and it was entering four.
Gotcha.
He was gonna go to Benning, Tennessee, Webb's had one and had thought that he was gonna try and get a three quarter inch. I didn't, I didn't hear back, so apparently there was either one. Um, but what he did say is, uh, I would change the valve valve. Something, uh, one price was twenty-five hundred dollars and then the other price for the valve was, uh, like four hundred. So I said, I can understand four hundred, but twenty-five, we're gonna have to really smooth some people to get that to go through, but. I said, we don't need that, we don't need that, so. Uh, and I worked on the tennis courts last week to see what we could do there and I talked to Cynthia today and I got some numbers. Uh, I spent probably fifty minutes and I did probably a ten by five foot section with the pressure washer.
Five zero, fifty, not fifteen, five zero.
Yes, right. That was it, um, and it, it was, uh, yeah, it did, it comes off, that mold stuff comes off. But it was just so time consuming, I'm like, and then you turn around and look and there's two full ports that, you know, it's gonna take weeks to do that. I looked into, uh, a company. That was over in Attica where we get our stone from. All they do is surface, they don't clean surfaces, they put surfaces down like. Like a clay surface, that's what they do, they smoosh everything down to make a clay surface, basically, but they don't do it. I called another company up in St. John's Berry, very hopeful. He recommended putting no detergents or chemicals on that, uh, surface, he said that's a, uh. It's a paint with like a rubber adhesive in it, so. It's, it's, uh, it's like a softer, it's a thicker paint, softer paint, he says you put anything kind of count on that. Because it might not show up now, but a year down the road, you'll start to notice it's flaking or is it soaked in? So I said, well, what do you guys use? And he gave me a, um. Uh, Whirlaway makes, and I've seen it, uh, I looked at Home Depot and they rent them, they don't have them here. But it's a, it looks like a, it's a twenty-four inch circle and it has, you hook it up to your pressure washer. Like the one that I have is very small, it's only like a three thousand. I have, I think mine is like a thirty-five hundred, but I'm sure we could get a bigger one. Three thousand to four thousand and it does twenty-four inches and he says it's, it's on wheels, on casters. And you just push it slow and it, and it chews that up because there's like. Twenty-one sprayers inside that system. And it's, and it's. Spins. And it's, um, the Whirlaway one was. Nice, but it wasn't nine hundred dollars nice, I think for what we're gonna do and like he said. Um, they just had a, a person call them and say, you know, what are you using? We'd like to have it for our personal. And he says, I looked it up, got him the number, he said three, four hundred and I'm like, well, I didn't see that book, cause everything I found was nine hundred or eight hundred. But I found, uh.
Can't rent it, what?
Yeah, I just think it's time, the amount of time that we're gonna have then, I think there would be.
Can we just contract with somebody to do that?
Well, that's the, the other thing is there's nobody, there's change at St. John's Berry and Connecticut. That's only ones that.
So it would be prohibitive.
So I, I mean, I think that one of the most important things to me is in terms of. What Willie should be doing right now and because we're coming to the end of the season. I don't think it's a good use of his time to creep around those.
Well, no, because it's gonna get.
And he said, and he said, but I think, but I think what was, what we need to do over the winter. Is to think about a plan and then every year, all of those ports. Need to be played, he's already blowing them off, I mean, we're already blowing debris off, but they need to be, they need to be washed off to, to. Prevent the pride from, from accumulating.
It sounds to me like the device is something we should purchase.
That, and I think that's what we should explore and really get the prices.
What are the devices for next year?
They're cheap, I found two, uh, Garvey is one model. That's a twenty-four inch and then there's Bever that makes a twenty-three inch that has. It's, it seemed like a better spray, like it had more nozzles in it for a system. Um, both of them are less than three hundred bucks. All you gotta do is have a, a pressure washer hooked up to it and you're off and running.
So I, I think it, I think it would be good if you could, um, give me the references so I can look it up and get, you know, a picture and. Be able to show the board and then we can put it on a budget for something to buy, but I, I just don't think that's a good use of his time.
But as in time, like that guy said, he goes, it's one of the things.
It's still gonna take a, a while, but you're gonna get it clear.
What he said after doing so many of them, he said, you buy that unit, you always own it. And he said you can use it on sidewalks. He said they do a lot of sidewalks, town sidewalks too. Which I think, you know, we got some grunging running around on things, you could clean them all. Um, because it's, you can change your water. Machine, you can change a pressure washer to adjust to how much you really want, I mean, you could go as high as four thousand, it might be too much, he said. But he goes, that's all, and you're gonna try it on that surface. Every surface is different depending on how much sun it gets and.
Yeah.
Well, that would be, what's the PSI rating of the pressure washer that we have?
Three thousand.
You don't want to go too high, you don't wanna damage that port, um. We just wanna clear some of the scum off of it, that's what.
Is that enough though? Because as you add more nozzles on a twenty-four inch. It dissipates the PSI, so.
Thirty, thirty-five hundred machine would be probably ideal.
I was thinking. Either forty-two hundred PSI steel one and then you just. It's gas and it's out there, it's yours, yours is gas, right? You have. So maybe we want a budget for a new pressure washer and that.
And the other thing that Willie and I discussed was, um, thinking about other projects for the park for next year. Um, there's certainly the possibility of doing the, the four golf greens, the same restoration that we did this year. Um, I don't believe we're gonna get the softball park restored the way Jimmy was proposing this fall, I think we're. We don't have the money, there is money left over from the, the golf green restoration. But not twelve thousand dollars, it's more like five, but one idea is to ask the partner wreck if they can move that. To the greens next year and maybe apply for the. The softball park restoration funding, cause I think the golf greens, the softball park and the surfaces of the ports, I think those are. Three good things, yeah, yeah, and eventually, and eventually we will have to do restoration on the Little League field and the varsity. Ball field, hardball field, but, um, we're gonna start with the softball field.
And so they're not doing any work on the softball field then, right? Cause I know Jamie had the guy there and they were talking.
Um, I, I don't know, he, Jamie talked about how the, the school would pay the four thousand for the stone, I don't know if it's possible to put new stone down. In the infield without doing the rest of the work. Um, he's not here, I have not talked to him about it, he, I did prepare a sketch of the project for him. That you could take in formally with the Park and Rec Committee if you so choo, chose. Um, and, and so he, he may have, be able to report back to the board on that.
All right, anything else to report?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Willie. Um, fire department, we have a couple of things, one is information only. It's, um, information for the insurance reimbursements.
It'll, this constitutes, Cynthia, if I'm correct, this is the first reading of. The Arlington Fire Department Service Reimbursement Ordinance.
And then the next one will be the hearing.
Will be the hearing, so. Uh, we had at our previous meeting, Karen, for your reference, this was introduced to the board. Um, there were a, one recommendation by Chief Holly. And that was to address motor vehicle fires. So as you will see in the draft amended, uh, ordinance that you have in your packet this evening. Uh, the change control to this was in Article Three, Sub Item B. We added the word fire, so it now reads motor vehicle accidents and fires. And then in Article Five, under invoicing. Uh, subsection B. It now reads motor vehicle accidents and fires. As denoted, um, so that we can bill for motor vehicle fires to insurance. So. Yeah, there is, isn't there? Thank you, I usually catch those too, where, where am I saying it again? Oh, I see it, L number two. Okay, we'll correct that for the, for the, uh. Correct that for. The hearing. Thank you. Um, so that is, uh, those were the only changes to be made, um. Everything else remained as introduced.
I don't know if this is pointing to it, but the only thing I can see in there, the fire, this handle, that helicopter things.
Um, we, they do set up landing zone for rescue. Um, we discussed that with Chief Holly and did not feel that it was warranted to be added.
Cause I understand, I know they did.
Um, you know, the, the one thing is that the rescue squad, we're good neighbors and they do respond to fires. Um, with the fire department and stand by and they don't bill us for that time.
Okay.
So, you know, if we wanted to start billing for setting up a landing zone for a helicopter, I could foresee us getting into a situation where now we're to bill people back and forth.
I didn't know if there was any kind of liability issue.
Others, no liability, that's all kind of covered under the state statutes and everything. Um, and that's normal, uh. Like the fire department in Manchester would set up landing zone. Um, they have a designated area, but sometimes they can't use that for whatever reason, they help coordinate, so. The fire department, you know, close route seven and do traffic control and stuff like that, so. Yeah, yeah, and we talked about, uh, and, and kind of spitball. Do we bill for that? But determine that it wasn't. Okay, for the number of times and the fact of the support that we get from the rescue squad department as well, it's kind of an internal service that goes back and forth. Um, and once again, I just for any member of the public that is listening. Um, in this ordinance, uh, the purpose is really to reclaim our costs for consumable items. And to also be able to put some money towards the sinking funds. Uh, for fire truck replacement. Um, so that the taxpayers don't always have to, um. Feel the full impact of that. Uh, but we are, we do not charge for fire protection services, so like for a house or building fire.
Right.
That is not a billed item, that is included in taxpayer dollars.
And the basic reason for that is statutory, the fire department is fire protection. Of the residents. Automobile accidents have become a part of it, but are not mandated. So unless it's a motor vehicle fire, which, you know. Yeah, they get called for a motor vehicle fire, but they respond to, it's been told to me, they respond to. Far more automobile accidents. And fires than they do house fires, which stands to reason.
And with like an automobile fire. Even, and this has changed a lot now too, which is why Chief Holly had us add in fires for motor vehicles. Is most vehicles have, if they're hybrid right now or it's an electric vehicle, there's a completely different way to address that vehicle fire. And there's actually blankets that they have to put over it and everything to smother the fire. Yeah, and so.
These are a big problem, I thought.
The challenge is that's a one-time use consumable item, it's very expensive, so. Um, we have an opportunity to build insurance. And they will reimburse us for those consumable items, so. Um, that's really the whole, um. Premise behind this is to update from our ordinance that we've had in place, uh, since it was originally enacted in August twentieth of two thousand and four. Um, but, and we adopted fees on January twenty-fourth of two thousand and five and have never updated them. So this is a refresh, uh, accounting for inflation and everything. Uh, and technology changed between two thousand and five and twenty twenty-five. And then, um, the phase two of this will be working, uh, I will be working to see what. Outsourcers we have available to streamline insurance billing. That'll integrate with the fire department's, uh, run management system. So when they respond to a call, if it's a motor vehicle accident, automatically they could have an app on their tablet. Collect all the necessary information and almost by the time they are leaving the scene. That outsourcer electronically is actually already starting to bill insurance for their consumables and everything. Uh, and which is one reason why in our fee schedule. We are billing for consumables of actual cost plus a fifteen percent service fee. Which would cover the contingency for an outsourcer to provide the support staff and technology to bill insurance appropriately.
And you got the iron written. The armor.
Oh, look at that. Thank you. Totally missed, I. And I'm usually pretty good at that.
I know you're.
Totally missed that, thank you. And you, you can, I've sent you a bunch of stuff for work now too, oh my God, love fruit readers, love fruit readers, thank you very much. Um, so I think that concludes our first reading of the ordinance and at next meeting will be the public hearing around the insurance reimbursement ordinance. Uh, and I will make those typographical corrections.
The policies are, um, the website.
Um, this is an ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
Okay, cause it.
There may be a version of it on the.
I need to change that word as well. It should be amended ordinance, not policy.
Update the whole website, um, but it's, this is an ordinance, not a policy.
That's another.
Is updating our website.
It's, the other ordinance is. And the ordinances that are listed are under the zoning, if you go to the zoning. Yeah, but, but.
It's our goal on terms to get that corrected and get that redone, that's. I think that's on my November list to write the RFP, um, for the website rebuild.
Perfect.
Awesome. Super, you wanna write the RFP?
I saw that you were looking at Manchester, so I'll look at that, I have a chance.
Yeah. Um. Okay, any other questions regarding insurance reimbursement ordinance? Thank you, Karen, for, um, helping me through the read, I do appreciate that. Okay, uh, the next order of business under the fire department, it was requested from the fire department. Um, Chief Holly had asked several times about a company or corporate credit card. Um, for purchases, uh, their concern were. um for purchases. Uh, their concern were not only a primary concern that I heard was related to fuel purchases mainly after hours um when Kempley has closed uh to refuel trucks for another call or run. Um, I think we've addressed the purchasing of supplies and consumables to continue to run that through the Select Board Office. Um, just to ensure that we are abiding by our tax exempt status with the vendors as appropriate. So the solution I came up with for fuel is uh based on the WEX Fleet Fuel Card Program. Uh, the state of Vermont has a state contract with WEX. Um, the trans and all of the state departments use this program. Uh, it allows us um cards issued for each particular, I'm going to use vehicle in a general term. So it would be fire truck or even town highway vehicle um for fuel. And they have plenty of controls around. So the cards issued per vehicle and then each driver has a PIN number and you register the uh odometer reading at the pump when you swipe the card to get fuel. Uh, it is accepted at over ninety-five percent of fuel stations nationwide. So for the Fire Department, that will provide us the ability, you know, if they're running a mutual aid call, let's say in Cambridge, and let's say there was something catastrophic and they were there for a really long period of time, they would be able to go to a local fuel station to refill a truck if per se, if they needed to. Um, with the card, it accounts for our tax exempt status. Uh, monthly reports, we can track spending and everything online. Um, and because it is already an approved state contract, there is an addendum form that Dan has um that he can sign. And we don't have to RFP this or anything. There's no enrollment setup or card fees um based on the state contract. So. I personally have used fleet fuel cards before at my previous employer. I think that they work very well. There are a lot of controls around it. So we don't have to worry about abuse or misuse. It's easily tagged. And it would really give the Highway Department as well as the Fire Department the ability um for us to get fuel after hours or to get some odd reason. Um, you know, I know Kempley sometimes is challenged with staffing issues. They don't have that many employees. If he's closed for the day, his pumps are still on. So we can get fuel there. You can go to Stewart's because they're open to get fuel there. Um, you know, if you're running a call in Shepherdary or or whatever, it gives us a lot of flexibility.
So Matt, I don't have any problems. Any questions?
So how does that work as far as an exit? So we, we would.
They take it off.
They take it off.
On the back end.
Okay. I just wondered how that worked.
Yeah.
Um, so I, we would control how many cards there were and who got the card and give them the PINs and stuff. Um, I did not think, I mean, I had these fire things on the agenda and Brian, you know, usually comes. I did not think to make make sure. Do you think we need, does you already know?
I've already talked.
You talked him? Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
As finding a solution, that was their biggest concern was really around fuel after hours and um.
Right, and I think that was really legitimate and it sounds like this system has ample ways to control for.
A lot of controls. So we will issue cards for each vehicle. And then all of the authorized users will, uh, whoever we authorize. So, you know, and we can talk to Chief Holly about that is to who's authorized to use the card for the particular truck within the Fire Department. So usually they, um, I think like truck foremen's or maybe it's just the chiefs. But they have their PIN number and they'll put, um, so when you present the card at the pump, it will ask for the driver's PIN and then it actually asks for the odometer reading on the vehicle. And those two checks and balances avoid um abuse of the card potentially filling a personal vehicle, right? And if the odometer didn't match up in the right sequence, it would raise a flag on a report to alert you that that was a violation, right?
So you've got the date, the time, the PIN and the odometer.
That's correct. Yes.
Yeah.
And in theory, we could issue a card to the park as well because like you get fuel for mowers and weed whackers and stuff like that. Um, and in theory, we can build some controls around that. So you could use that at the park as well to get fuel on the Sunday afternoon or the Monday that Kempley is, you know, maybe closed for a staffing issue and still have access to fuel. So I would make a motion that we approve the uh WEX Fleet Card Program and authorize Chairman Harvey to sign the addendum and get that going on the approval process with WEX under state contract uh three six, three five four.
There's second. Pause second line. Question made by Matt and seconded by Karen to authorize myself to sign the agenda with uh WEX for the Fuel Card Program. It's what's there. Um, any discussion? Are those in paper signal? Probably saying that.
Aye.
Uh.
And Janet, um, Dan will have that. So it has instructions on where to scan and send that to. And I refilled that out. So Cynthia will put that on your desk.
Thank you.
And then if you have questions or problems with onboarding, just let me know and I'll be happy to help you.
Thanks so much.
All right. Next item is Town Hall.
Well, wait a minute. We have the fire protection agreement.
That's right. Fire Council Group. I'm sorry. My mistake.
That's all right. We added.
And there was a few edits and all.
There are a few edits, so. Fire Department liaison work here. Um, I did review and Jamie, did you have a chance to review this? No, okay, that that's fine. You can, you can be honest and say no.
No.
Um.
That's fine. I wanted to.
I think there's a number of, uh, we've got a couple questions and issues. They really come up starting at section three. Um, my first question is, did we, it's the dates because it says that the term of this agreement should be for one year, beginning on January one twenty-five and ending at midnight on December thirty-first twenty-five. And then when you look at section four, it says that we need to pay the lump sum for fire protection services on or before the twenty-eighth of February twenty twenty-six, payable within forty-five days. So the first question is, did we pay them for twenty twenty-five?
We talked about this last one, last year. We went over this. So I'm ninety-nine percent sure that we paid for last year. This should be for the ensuing year coming up.
Right.
Right.
So should be. They've got their dates wrong.
And so I think the dates are wrong in here.
Yep.
If the dates are not wrong, then the, under section three term of agreement, presuming that we are postpaying for the year, that needs to be covered, that needs to be specifically called out instead of prepay. I would think that we would prepay them. The way this contract is written.
I would think.
We usually pay it at the beginning of the year and it covers the entire year.
Yeah, it would be a prepay and.
The only thing that would, it covers the entire year, but the only thing that would be paid later was in the call.
That's correct.
An additional call and that gets billed almost immediately.
Right.
Yeah, right.
So those need to come in.
So I think that needs to be clarified, which brings us payment for services. Um, whether it's prepay or postpay needs to be clarified.
Because payable in advance.
Yes.
Four.
I know, that's why I say.
I think they didn't change the dates in the first thing.
Yeah.
I think this is.
Question right here. Mark, do you guys pay them for a service for White Creek at all? No.
Well.
Because they're automatic for several areas of White Creek too.
We, we don't.
But the town does.
Fire Company, but I believe the town does.
Yeah.
Yeah, and see, that's where my um discrepancy comes in is whether it's postpaid or prepaid because in that section four, it says payable in advance, which would indicate that it's prepay, but under the term of the agreement is suggesting it's postpaid.
I think they didn't change the date.
Okay, and then.
Should read the January one twenty twenty.
Six.
Yeah.
Through December twenty-six.
Because in section four, it actually says February twenty twenty-six.
Yes, it does. Yeah, so in fact, those are typos.
Yeah, and then um the other outstanding issue that I have is under section six governing law and venue of actions. Um, I believe that this provision needs to be changed so that this agreement is made and executed under the provisions of the state of Vermont, County of Bennington. Um, the village and the town agree that the laws of the state of Vermont will govern all disputes under this agreement and determine all rights hereunder. And that any action or judicial proceeding involving this agreement shall be brought only in the courts of the County of Bennington, State of Vermont. So it would be my recommendation that this goes to legal counsel for red lines and return to um the Village of Cambridge for approval.
And our reasoning on that is because the service is actually performed within the state of Vermont, not within the state of Vermont.
Right.
Because they're coming to Vermont to help.
They're coming to Vermont to help us and we're paying them with municipal funds from our taxpayers in the state of Vermont.
Yes.
So that's the, that's the action.
We have never caught that before.
So that, that is.
To me, that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I think.
The lawyers might have a smart reason why this should stay.
No, I, I think.
And if the lawyer says that it's okay the way it is, that's fine, but I ain't calling it out that it should be changed. That would also mean that if we had to litigate, our attorney would have to be.
We'd have to get another attorney.
And our attorney, I think, is.
In New York too.
It missed, it missed or in the New York bar, licensed in New York, but regardless, like this should be.
So there are some provisions that New York law, if something happens to one of their trucks, we are responsible for it by their law.
Well, we can let the lawyers work all that out.
So that's why I would assume they would want that.
Yeah, but this is for our convenience, not them. So.
So the action item for me is to send the agreement to the attorney and highlight those specific things.
Yes.
And and request comment.
See that they're common. It's the green light, the all one.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, and and the attorney may say, you know what? It doesn't matter. It's perfectly fine. And
and if they're.
I'm good if legal counsel says that that's okay.
But I want them to clear it.
But we have the date issue. Um, and I would imagine that that in terms of that, um, I, um, Janet or I could contact someone over there and just clarify that.
Typo, just have them change, send them a new, send them a new copy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've got, we've got the nearest name here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that may just be a typo and that's an easy fix, but um.
Yeah, no, no, that's right.
We need guidance from counsel on a governing law venue of action.
Other than that, I think it's pretty, boy look like.
Make sure you take out his name.
Yeah, Dan hasn't actually signed that, so.
Looks like Dan's.
Dan did sign it. But he didn't, he doesn't sign.
Well, we haven't voted on it, so.
Amy, how does Murray Hall work?
Shushin covers it, but they don't charge us their first due.
They, they are. I didn't know, but went through.
They are, no, they are first due, as is Cambridge EMS. Um, but they do not charge for their mutual aid services. Um, and Salem is similar up into the upper portions of Sandgate. Bates Allo and those.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they do not charge for their services up in there.
So do we have an agreement?
Mutual aid agreement, that's, that's it.
But we don't have something like this.
Written, not like this, no.
No.
And actually, that one is more so with Sandgate than it is with us.
Right, because.
Because although we provide fire protection.
Right.
It's the town of Sandgate.
Right.
Um, Shushin does cover first due and with all three of these departments, second uh department activated is supposed to be Arlington. Because it is in our
mutually.
Jurisdiction. Ultimately. Their first due, it is ultimately our jurisdiction.
See, in New York State, we're, we're different because the town of White Creek's, the White Creek Fire Company takes care of the White Creek Fire Company District. But we don't take care of the whole town. Cambridge takes care of part of it. And then it's just how their districts are set up. It's not town line like it is over here.
Right.
It's, it's quite different.
Hmm, yeah, it's hard to follow.
It is. It is.
Very hard to follow.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Well, that's it for that one. Waiting for legal counsel for the way.
And the dates.
And the dates to be correct. All right, the next item is Town Hall Computer Purchase. And I believe there is a quote in front of us.
Do you have a quote for you? So this is.
Yeah, just to say, I don't believe I sent the quote to everybody because um Matt was going to do a presentation.
I've got it here. I'll just run through it. So um this is a replacement computer for the town administrator. Um, should be a replacement laptop, uh, desktop monitor with downstream charging and a full-size keyboard and mouse. Um, this is sourced well um quoted on Vermont State Contract. So we can use single source through our provider CDWG. Um, we are going to take then and rebuild the town administrator's existing laptop and send that down to the Western.
Land use.
Land use administrator, because the land use administrator's laptop has a bulging battery, which has actually been removed because it was a fire hazard. Um, but that laptop is reached its end of usefulness and needs to be deprecated. So um, we've got a quote in front of you for an HP Pro Book sixteen-inch notebook. Um, Intel uh Core Ultra Seven, and that is on Vermont State Contract along with the LCD um monitor, twenty-four inch monitor for Cynthia's desk and a full-size keyboard and mouse. So she can use it as a desktop when she's in the office and she can carry that with her uh home should she want to do some extra work on the side. Um, it is basically standard and the same as what we originally purchased, that whole setup in there, although components, um, I think over time got shifted to other places. So I would make a motion that we approve the single source uh state contract purchase of a replacement laptop for the town administrator, including full-size monitor and keyboard and mouse for one thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-three cents. And that will come out of our Technology Sinking Fund.
There's a second.
A second one.
Yes, discussion.
Um, so I just wanted to say that um I think it's necessary to at least get the town administrator another laptop because right now, if the Planning Commission or the Energy Committee or the ZBA meet, I have to bring my laptop out here and leave it out here so that they can use the Zoom. And that's not necessarily a problem, but it a little bit becomes a bit of a security issue a little bit because we have to leave it, I have to leave it here. I, so and Joan should, Joan has her own computer and monitor, so she's got that. But she needs her own laptop because of the fact that she staffs those meetings.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So she'll be able to bring her laptop.
She'll be able to bring, which is what she used to be able to, you know? So, and I think that's really important that this laptop not be, you know, floating around.
You know, the administrator's laptop should be within the administrator's control at all times.
Exactly. And and I think that the, in terms of the monitor, I don't know that that's something I necessarily need, but I think Matt is correct that the option should be properly outfitted. Um, you know, I'm in there now and, but we know that in the future, somebody else really might want that future. So I think that we have to at least get the laptop because of the situation and then it makes sense to get the other things too. I, I, I know, I know. So, but I just wanted to say.
It really is an economics thing as well for you.
Yeah, no, I I just wanted to say, to give that um perspective.
Okay, most of them was made by Matt and cited by Karen to approve the single-source book from CGW in the total amount of sixteen thousand fourteen.
Sixteen, no, no, no.
Sixteen thousand, everybody's server name.
What kind of computer are you getting?
Six hundred fourteen dollars and forty-three cents. All those in paper, single five by seven.
Hi. I'm sorry, did we note that we're paying that out of the sinking fund, right?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, I was looking for it in here, for whatever reason, I can't find it, but I know there's money in it. Yeah, I will um. I will process that tomorrow. Actually, I can probably process it right now.
Okay. All right, now we're under new business. Six point one is a discussion of the Board of Civil Authority composition. There's a letter here, I think this is just for information, this is right?
Um yeah, I think I didn't know about what Mr. Mr. Jervis might might be at the meeting, I didn't know. Um so I didn't know what level of discussion is, I did send the board the letter along with background, um which is from my discussion with Robin, and um I have sent an inquiry to the Secretary of State asking uh for their um guidance in this matter, because since he's asking for the appointment of three Republicans to the Board of Civil Authority, because there are no Republicans on it, all of the Board of Civil Authority runs, the the Justice of Peace runs independently, the selectors have no party affiliation. So there aren't, there aren't anybody of any party on it on the Board of Civil Authority, so does that mean that that um that they can say, I mean, I just don't, we just don't know, we don't understand. Um so in other words, does that mean that the Democrats could say you have to appoint three Democrats, does that mean that the progressives could say you have to appoint three progressives? We all know that the people who are on the middle Board of Civil Authority probably have their own party affiliation, but we do not require that party registration in Vermont, and we do not list that for those offices here in Arlington, so um so if the if the Secretary of State says the board has to appoint these three Republicans at the request, we can go ahead and do that. But we thought it was an unusual enough situation that we should get guidance before we went ahead and did, and the Board of Civil Authority doesn't have any election mature, you know, any election matters before it for months and months, so we've got plenty of time.
Right. Well, I think, put that to the legal counsel and see.
Well, I think the Secretary of State is the best.
I know years ago, it used to be that way, they would, whenever Justice of Peace were elected, there was a slate from each party.
Right.
But that kind of all.
The party, the party organization just kind of have not been that active, and so this party is more active, and it's and it's fine, I mean, it's fine if this is what we should do. But the fact is, there may already be three Republicans on the Board of Civil Authority, we're just not asking, you know, so I we just want guidance, that's all.
Yeah.
And I just happened to have Robin give me put the ballot what's like, and you can see that there's no party affiliation.
No, yeah.
That's.
So you can't really say the Republicans are disadvantaged because there's no party affiliation.
And I have one other issue, something else to say, twenty twenty-two. Um. The Republican Caucus had put on um candidates for Justice of the Peace. The caucus, they gave me petition, they had the caucus, Robin put them on the ballot. And Wendy Beschiri won. So she was on, but you know, they caucused and they got out to the ballot, but they were elected by, you know, the town.
Right, but they didn't do that this past election.
Exactly.
And so it's like, why should, why, how did they get to be appointed when they didn't even bother to do that the last election, so.
I did print out the the statutes in the state if you guys are looking for them. If it's still on.
Maybe you can give that.
No, I can give it in.
No, I've I've got it.
Yeah, just email it all.
Because I just prevent, even though I'm out with Justice, uh, this land is provisioned by Justice.
Okay, I'll 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 make copies.
I gotta hold, I have copies.
Got them, all right, I will.
Thank you very much.
Right on the ball. Okay, so we'll look into that and uh address it in the future meeting, I guess.
These are two, these are two different ones, ones on the political issues, developments.
Okay. I've got this, this one is.
Yeah, this one's on the Justice of Peace.
Oh, okay, that's a separate.
Yep.
All right.
I did two.
Oh, okay. All right, so we will come back to that on a future meeting. Uh Arlington Energy Committee appointments is on that six point two.
And I believe I've sent those to people, and I think I also left some of. Yeah, I have some extra copies here, so if anyone wants a copy.
Okay, ready? Try it out, thank you.
Um so uh the uh appointments of the this committee somehow lapsed over the last couple of years and would not, their terms ran out, basically, and so we need to reappoint starting over again. And this slate is basically recognizing the people who've been intending and want to do it, some of the other people have stepped back. So this is what the energy committee wants, this is their slate, and um I and all of these people have been attending and participating, and so I would support um this slate, and this is what the Chair of the Committee supports, with some, three of them having a two-year terms and four of them having a one-year terms, and um I will make a firm note of the dates so that we don't let that slip away.
Just like our little.
Yeah, yeah, and I think the pand- the end of the pandemic thing were happening, and I don't know, somehow it just slipped away.
Okay. So you reviewed this with the Chair of.
Yes, yes.
Right, Stephanie?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I know we brought it up in the past, and I hate to be a pain in the butt, but we talked about having everybody come in before they're appointed, so that everybody knew the faces upfront, and there's two here that I'm not sure about, that I would recognize, I should, but I know the name. That's just my.
Um it's at the.
There's four of them that I don't know.
Yeah, same thing on me.
Maybe we should invite them in.
So what do you want, do you want all of them to come in?
I would think.
I mean, that was one of the things we discussed in the past, is having anybody who that we are appointing, have them come and sit before us, so we have a face to the name, so we know who it is that we're appointing, so.
Right, although I guess I. No, no, I I totally remember that, I thought that was mostly have to do with the planning commission and the ZBA, but there's no reason it couldn't apply to this as well.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess my only concern is right at this moment, um I mean, the the energy committee is an advisory committee, so it's not like it's taking actions. But I guess I get, I'm a little uncomfortable with the fact that right now, they're, they have no members, because we didn't, we didn't last. So I guess.
But who's that on, us or them?
Um I, you know, I I would, I would think it would be both, really, um both.
They should know when their terms are up.
I, you know, I I just, I I can't explain it, I don't know, um so if the board would like.
I just like to know if we're appointing people to any committee, that we know who they are ahead of time, so.
So would you like a letter from each of them?
No, I'd like to see them.
You want, you want all.
In person, just so that I can put a face to the name and know who, when somebody questions me, I got a face to the name, I've met them, yes.
I appreciate that.
I do, I do think your point is important, most of the the other boards have a legal statutory component.
Right.
This is truly advisory, we don't have to act on anything they say, we don't have to implement anything they do.
Right.
It's purely advisory.
So I think it 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 doesn't matter if two more weeks go by, you know, without having them on. What if um one of the nom- nominees um is unable to attend?
Well, I would.
Could they send a letter?
For the next, one of the next two meetings, maybe? And then as they come in, we.
We can appoint them in digitally, yeah.
Yeah, we can put them in visually, they don't have to be the slate.
Okay.
So. Yeah, I kind of agree, that's probably a.
I'd just like to know who I'm.
No, I think that's a good policy, and I just didn't think of it, I didn't think of it, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Yeah, I am sorry.
But yeah, but the the definite distinction is the other two boards are stat- have statutory.
Right, and they take action.
And they act, this this board does not, they
That's right.
They persuade us to do something or not.
Right.
Um. We don't have to, they're strictly advisement, there's no statutory component to it.
So we don't need like the chairman or Stephanie to be, no, definitely.
I mean, they, they're a committee, they're a working committee, but advisory only, so. All right, six point three. Health insurance planning review.
So.
That's just informational, isn't it?
So I want to just uh check in with the board, the, it is just informational, um and the consultants have not made their recommendations, remember, we have those hired consultants. Karen, we hired some consultants to advise us in terms of um how we can deal with the health insurance costs. So this is um the alternative, the 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 platinum, gold, and silver plans for MVP and Blue Cross from Shield, so this is the, the sort of the the playing ground, the field that we're on. We are expecting a consultant to give us advice about possible ways to do this, or health savings plans, or whatever. This is just the raw numbers, and the employees have it as well. The consultant believes that what will be good is when they have their recommendations, we, they have a meeting with all part of the board, it might just be a a subset of the board, a Zoom meeting. And then once they have, once their recommendations are out there and the board has a sense of direction, that the consultants can have a Zoom meeting with the employees. And then, um and this could be a daytime meeting, so it would be, you know, people would be paid for their time, maybe lunchtime or whatever, you know, so that they could um ask questions of the consultants and learn more and just find out more about what's going on, and the reason why I want to mention that timeline is we know the open enrollment period is, I think, in November into December, so we don't actually have a lot of time, so once the consultants have their recommendations for us, we need to have these meetings kind of boom, boom, and so I want to get that out there so the board and the town employees can be thinking about that, um.
Are these raised piggybacked on the municipal, municipal Vermont group in that time? You know, like the teachers belong to the municipal group.
These are through VLCT.
Oh, they are, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, I mean, we get our insurance comes through, we buy this through VLCT and state contract.
I do know if they're staying good.
It it's like state contract.
Okay, good.
And is the, is the MVP that same way through the VLCT, or is it? Or not?
I've never seen that as an option given either.
I've never seen that as an option either, but that piqued my interest as to what are the differences between, I really would like to know the details, I, we know what the details of the platinum are, I think somewhere we've got that matrix. You know, what it includes, but the MVP would be interesting because you know, we might be able to do something where we offer that platinum plan at this year and then start to phase in co-pay or um employee contribution, that still save money.
I did give the the um, in the paper version, the actual charts are there, we just couldn't, we couldn't put everything in that, you know, it's just too much, but but.
Oh, I'm sorry, so I'd like to review that.
But um Janet, Janet, are you there?
I am.
So um the MVP is an option through VLCT?
The consultant that we hired, that is like through VLCT, but then there are, there are a subsidy of them, I think they recommended the consultant. They're the ones that sent us the new rates for Blue Cross and for MVP, it's not that we, it's not that we will pay VLCT, we will pay them separately, like we play, we pay.
No, we pay direct.
Yeah, we pay them.
But it's just a group rate that we get.
Yes. But we pay them directly.
But that's one of the reasons that this is preliminary, because we still have to hear from the consultant, um and and uh when when we did the summary, we didn't look at all the details, because we just couldn't put everything in there.
I'll take this and read it on the train.
I'm sure you will.
Um.
Because a lot of, a lot of companies are moving out of Vermont, I just want to make sure.
Well, right, I mean, that's.
Blue Cross Shield can't move out of Vermont, because it's Vermont, but MVP, I think their ra- rates are different because they have the New York school insert, not just Vermont, and as of right now, they're still in Vermont, so.
I mean, if I look at a family, right, we could save three forty, forty-six a month per family plan by moving to MVP. But I need to figure, I need to, I need to like look and see what's comparable and what people are losing, and so I need to do some research, and I think, too, um it would be really good, once the consultant gets their report together, to present that to us.
The, yeah, they were very comparable in what they offered, maybe there was ten dollars more for like the specialist fee for MVP.
Sure.
But overall, they were pretty comparable and significantly less, and there are still two other companies she's waiting to hear from. So there will be four total when she gets us those.
Excellent.
That that'd be more than three hundred and something, for the twenty-six to twenty-six compared. The top number on the Blue Cross.
Oh, shoot, you're right, you know what, yeah, I was doing my math on something on that. Hey, don't pick on me, you're a coward. It uses reverse Polish notation, okay, and I'm Polish, so personally. Five forty-three oh one. Yeah, we're, we're a team.
Yeah, we are a team.
I love it.
You know how that works then, too, if I hand this to Jamie, he wouldn't be able to get anything out of that. Okay, I'm gonna study this, because I think um this is.
Remember that he doesn't have any of the consultant's recommendations.
No, no, I appreciate that.
And 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 the um, the police are talking to him.
Today, we are a hundred percent.
Covers.
And that's one of the issues.
That's why we are for, we're moving, phasing in. Participation. So it's a balancing act. To move from everything to purpose. Over several years, okay, do you have any sense of one that consultant maybe?
Um I I don't, I don't know if Janet knows, I mean, again, it's this has happened.
No, I just, yeah.
Because because we we're gonna run out of time, but they only just got all these rates, these rates only just came out like a week or so ago, and they have had, have a chance to.
Can we inquire as to how soon?
I I think that would be a useful inquiry, um because, because, you know, it's got.
It's gonna happen soon.
Yeah. And they're probably cranking the same kind of thing for all their difference.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, they understand that they'll.
So Janet and I will reach out and try to.
All right. Any other questions on the insurance?
Just don't be curious about those, they use their hospital.
Well, that's the thing, you got to kind of.
That's what I'm not sure about, that's what I'm not sure about.
Because sometimes they'll, you know, they've all contacted them, with our only hospital, or, you know, some of their.
Oh, we've run into that before.
No, and I think that's one of the, um, that's one of the.
You won't know until you have to go.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
The consultant should be able to check and make sure that in network, got a network, all of that kind of stuff.
When you look at it, it was, oh, wow, let's go down, wait a minute.
Yeah, but you have to go to Grace Cottage in Townsend, or you'd be get service or something, right?
Yeah, all right, so if you can make any inquiry, certain question.
Did you want, do you guys want to?
I just.
You don't want to sit in on it, you say what, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, make sure anybody that.
I know with Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Vermont, when I first got it, because we we use a doctor. I know with Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Vermont, when I first got it, because we, we use the doctor in Greenwood. But they, you know, they. It, by the way that I read it, it is, it pretty much cover the. Adjoining counties in, in the other states. So, we in Washington County, but we, we've been to Albany Meds and Jenny Metters for. Corn and Philly Ten and, and it was like. And so. I know, the Blue Cross.
Blue Cross Blue Shield is.
Oh, yeah.
MVP then.
Well, and we'll see what the other two plans are, who knows what they will be, so.
Alright, six point four, budget planning, major projects, water department, we talked about some last night.
Okay, and I think the, the, the water department, we'll talk about at the next water department meeting. And we mentioned about the park, we've actually mentioned about the sidewalk, both in front of the town hall and the seven A sidewalk. Um, and, um, and I think, and I, I would hope that would be our big project for next year. I'm sure you'll be continuing with Palverts, I don't know if it would be a paving project next year, we won't have any money saved up for it, um, but. You know, so I don't know about that. Um, and I would like to do some work on the town hall in terms of. Checking out the siding and where we need to go with repairs on the windows. And kind of get somebody to help us with that, and deal with that threshold down there, things like that. So Yellow Barn, um, building needs the carpentry and painting, that's the last step. It may be some roofwork, but the carpentry and painting.
There's few slits missing.
And there's few slides, and there is money in the Yellow Barn fund. So, um, so I, I think that would be a big project that, um, that we could get ready. If it does need some town funds, I think it's important to know, it's because of the lack of storage at the garage and for the water departments. The Yellow Barn actually plays a role in providing storage in both those departments. Instead of just by, um, expenditure property tax dollars, which we have entirely avoided up till this time.
Go ahead. I know this probably doesn't sound right, is everyone some way to eradicate the bats? Because if you walk in there now, everything is covered in bat feet.
Every. Eradicating bats is not something that you wanna talk about, um. How you would exclude them from a building that by definition.
I'm just saying that.
No, I get that, I think you need to cover things up. If you, if you don't want to get covered with their, up, on the upper level, I don't know about the lower level. Well, I just, if I had something I didn't want, I probably don't, but I take.
Buildings kind of like Swiss cheese.
Yeah, and, and we're not, we have no plans. No, 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 it's, it's kind of habitat, but I take your point, I take your point. I mean, I also wanted to mention that, um. Depending on how things go, we might be starting the energy efficiency work at the town garage for next year. But I'm not sure how that's gonna lay out.
Alright, so we'll take up the water department during your meeting, and. So if anybody has any projects that they think they wanna.
Cause these are just what I thought of, you guys.
Yeah, we put our next budget, their, the website, uh.
I think the website is important.
Website, yes, yes.
And that may be able to be funded through our technology sinking fund, and there's, and there, I'm not sure, so.
Yep, we've got a pretty good sum in there.
I do have an idea about if I want.
Okay.
Up here. And I understand it's far away, really, we maintain it in winter.
Sure.
Half the time, then we push these marble off and.
Yeah, like.
And, and getting a, a concrete contractor between now and the end of the season, probably Nellin.
Yeah.
Nellin Boyd, I mean, we're still waiting, we, we're trying. Um. We could go up through, remove all the slate.
No, no, it's marble.
Marble. Marble, sorry, I picked the wrong one.
Stone.
Yeah.
Stone. And put it on pallets, move it somewhere, do whatever with it, and then put some finer gravel. Down, tell that it's easier.
The path.
But it's, it's a pad for now, until, until you do something different. Because I, I totally agree with what Mr. James said this evening, we all know.
We all do.
Um.
Put some surf pack down or roll it.
Yeah, yeah.
Would there, would, could you, like, if, if you. Well, I just think that's an interesting idea, I'm not, I'm not sure if it would all come out, but I guess you could make it come out, I mean, right up.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, so, I think that's, yeah.
I don't think there's any cement from, from, from here.
I just couldn't remember.
That way, it's all in dirt.
No, that way, that way's true.
Yeah.
And how far, and it doesn't go.
You set it on dirt, put on your ground. Yeah. This would then just probably just slip it off.
Yeah.
If there's cement, I bet it's not any thicker than what the marble would. I can't, I can't guarantee that we wouldn't break any of the marble, getting it up.
Yeah, but I've got moon break in the shed. I mean, I'm serious, I've got.
Yeah, if marble breaks up.
So, could you, could you evacuate that and make sure that's possible?
Yeah, wouldn't you do it all? I mean, I'll walk it to, just to make sure that, you know, we'll be able to get it all up out.
I don't think there's a problem with some of it breaks, because, um, I think we still got some other marble from across the way.
We can get a product, if Teckons actually have some, we have a little bit of it left over the HBH.
We have, and, and I've put the part that's have come up there out back on pallets.
It's called shoulder stones, what, what it has on some of the, what passes to the rectum.
Yeah, I think that would be.
I mean.
Yeah.
Sharp term solutions.
Uh, cause I'm not comfortable with it.
We could get at least through the next year until you.
I think that's, I think that's perfect, and I'm, I'm not comfortable with trying to do something real fast.
You know, not only that, like we said, there's, there's no way you're gonna find a, a concrete contractor.
Thank you, Willie.
Hey, Willie.
Um, are we gonna? I think, from a budget perspective, like, this is a great opportunity, I just thought of town hall, fire department, security, like, some things. And not that everything's gonna make the final cut, but this is a good opportunity for everyone to get some kind of, you know, close. Finger in the wind, kind of budgetary numbers to think about and propose, and then we'll see what. Right, can make the cut at the end, um, based on all of the deciding factors. Um, including where we wanna land and, you know, trying to keep the tax rate as close as possible. To what it is today, right? Or, um. I, I can't say that, how that's even gonna work out if we don't.
No, now is the season for wish lists.
But is this a season for the wishlist? And my other question on that, um, around budget. I know. In past years, we've kind of just done it. During the select board meeting and tried to go through it, but then I also remember way long ago. When I first got on the select board, um, that very first time, I kind of ran. Just to give it a try, and we sat in the other room and went through line by line.
That's what I, that's what I proposed for this time, because.
I think we should.
I'm not capable.
Every department came in, we sat.
Yes.
And did. And even if we had to do it three nights in a row during the week, like, we need to do that.
Yes, no, I totally agree, I've already talked to Janet about creating that thing with the blank lines on the side. And there are some that we just know what it's gonna be, and we put it in, but then, and, and to have Josh do the same thing with his budget. I think that that's where we need to start, um.
Well, especially for this year with the terminal doing the.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Smarter way to do it.
Yeah.
But we.
Mark, we can then have fire department come in, have everybody come in, sit down and go.
One, one, four nights at least of that week.
Absolutely.
We do it the next week, but you have one department a night.
Mm-hmm.
The big ones in the highway and fire.
And the other thing is that, um, we can start that in December, you know, and, and if we, if we've. If we've addressed the health insurance issue, then, and if we're thinking about, you know, compensation and what are we doing? We can start talking about, but even though we don't have the final budget figures from this year. We can start talking about what's going on in the departments and get ready.
We can put requests out through all the department heads to give us their wishlist.
And we can, and we can give them that chart with the blank lines and, and, you know, ask them.
I think that's a great, and I actually love the idea of starting in December, and then just spread it out a little bit more, so that we're not. Here, five days.
Yep.
And then, y- you know, maybe it, it's six meetings, because it's spread out a little bit. And then we have one meeting where everybody comes in and we do a final, like, pass of the budget. Like, this is, you filled out your stuff, we met as a board, we met with you, we went through. And trimmed this down, and this is where the budget sits, and then you have that final pass, final cut meeting. Where everybody's here, we just kind of go through it, anybody raises their hand. Can say their piece from the departments, and then we make the final, um, determination.
Yeah, and there are some things where we will need the twenty twenty-five numbers, which we don't get immediately, so sometimes we need that. But I think a lot of it we could do ahead of time, a lot of it we can do.
A lot of it we can preliminary argue. And, but the, the year-end stuff, the final totals on each, each budget won't be in until first week of.
Right.
February.
Sure, and I, I got, I called up pricing for salt for this year, just to let you know that. Uh, who we got it from, last year it was eastern salt, and last year it was like seventy-eight dollars a ton, this year it's ninety-five.
Oh, woo.
So, I haven't got my price back from Appalachia yet.
Yep.
Um, the gentleman I spoke with at Appalachia said that he had heard that Argyle may not even be able to get salt.
Oh.
So, it might be, um. Might be a fun year.
Well, I don't know, right?
Um, he did say Charis were part of that, because most of our salt comes from either South America or Egypt.
Hmm.
And, um, probably the odds.
Yeah, I don't think they have many.
I mean, it jumped eighteen, it's about eight, seventeen to eighteen dollars a ton.
Ah.
In that one. Provider, so.
We don't have any, you last year, last year was.
They have eighty, about eighty ton in the shed from last year.
Is that good, is that a?
About what, two?
Two storms, three storms?
Three storms, maybe, we can get out of it.
And it depends on the type of storm.
Yeah, it does, yeah, it does.
You get an icy storm, it's gonna eat a lot more.
What's happening, we've been getting a lot more.
Then what hurt us so bad last year was the two inch on, the little, the little ones, they take as much material almost as a very big storm does.
Yeah.
And, you know, they happened what, two to three times a week last year.
It was like a weekly basis, huh?
Yeah.
And it's not all rough.
Um, but I know that's gonna go up, the other thing I'm gonna have to discuss too is, is, um. You know, to, to, to be able to have a, a blacktop plans. And, and go big, and. And keep up with it, we need to put away what it takes to do a half mile road a year. And that's sixty thousand dollars, we put away twenty right now, so that's. I don't know.
No, no.
And, and I don't, I hate to say it, it's just inflation the way it's, it is.
It is.
And the only blacktoping that's been done in, in the last twelve years, from what I can. Take from everything that I've seen, it's, it's been when we get a, a blacktop grant, you can't wait five, six years in between. If, if you wanna keep the blacktop going, um, cause if not, the miners will start tearing someone, well, go back to dirt like ice cream. That's no fun either.
Well, I, I will say the ice pond. Plan worked, as far as writing it, is that, if you remember when that was paved, it was terrible, it was. It was treacherous to drive across them, and it, it's never been that problem since we drowned it. So, traffic wise, it's a lot easier in cars the way it is than it was when I was there.
Oh, I, I agree that.
That's all well.
You know, and other towns around are, are not going backwards.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they're going forward. And I, I just wanna keep it.
The outliers.
I wanna be able to keep at least what we have.
Yes, yeah.
Um.
I'd like to see a little more.
I would too, but, you know, I wanna at least be able to maintain.
No, I, I know that.
No, I know.
Budget wise, it's maintenance right now.
Maintenance.
Not addition, but we've got some really high traffic areas.
And I hate to throw, you know, forty thousand more dollars at the budget, but.
Oh, next to this fire truck sinking funds, I think our repaid in line is the next biggest priority. Just one man's opinion. Cause we need to do something to hedge up and then maintain.
So I, I spoke with Patrick Wilson at the, at VTRAN in Bennington, he does the asphalt, their blacktop. Grants, and. He told me that in the spring, or February, I think it is, that we submit everything. To submit a big project and a small project. So, uh, I will get prices for both, so that, because he said sometimes he, he can do a few big projects. And then there's a little bit of money left, you know, then, and he said, you know, if I got this a little bit, and I see, oh, you, you got a little project here. I can, you know, maybe give you some, um, we've also been trying to find out if we can do anything with the grants on signage. And. Argyle, but I haven't come up with anything yet. There's a lot of our signings in town, some of it's coming up missing. And we're gonna disappear, yeah.
It is my first time.
Two stop signs, two post, and two lost like road signs. I'm not lost like this one.
Yeah. I found a bunch of old, out of, out of size of tons.
I have them over there, and that's actually.
So.
Mark, did you ever get the pricing for this?
No, and actually I just saw that, I, I.
Because they want, they called me a couple of times since.
He gave it to me two weeks ago, I don't know why he didn't. I'm going to, right now. If I can find it on here.
I would just like to get them to pay for that.
Yes, I, I mean, myself as well.
Alright, anything else under? New business?
Can we just, um, in the, speaking of tariffs and the ever-changing pricing landscape. Our town administrator computer package changed by thirteen dollars and eighteen cents.
It's not bad.
So, I don't know if that's an issue.
It went down?
No, it went up, fifteen dollars and eighteen cents. So, if everybody's good with that, I would find, I don't, I think that's within the fudge factor. Uh, plus minus ten percent that we're allowed, so, but I just, I converted that in. Technology, I got the quote three days ago, so I should've known that it was gonna change.
No, old business, wastewater committee to report, is there?
Yeah, I, I just, um, I just wanted to be sure that the, much of the board, um, Karen. Uh, Dan and Matt and Jamie are actually on the wastewater committee, um, we've been doing a study of. Um, are there ways to, uh. Develop kind of community-based wastewater processing systems in different parts of town? Are there ways to help people be sure they clean out their septic systems? Just doing a big study, and they're on the committee, but I know, um, Glenn's not, and you're of course just coming in new. Um, so I just wanted to be sure that the board knows that we will be having a public meeting with the consultant. Who's been working on this study in the first week or so in November, in December. And, um, it, we won't necessarily be at a stopping point, we won't necessarily be through with all the work. But we need to have a public meeting to inform the public of what we've been doing and what we found. And to try to get this word out about pumping out the septic system. So, um, I just wanted the, the board to know that I'm proceeding to try to follow the direction of the wastewater committee. To contact different landowners, to try to be sure we're making the most of any opportunity we have. And that in, as I say, in the beginning of December, we will have a public meeting for, um, the, the whole community. And the consultant from Art Creek will be there, and we will just tell them what we've been doing and what we've found. And it won't necessarily be final, it won't necessarily be good news or bad news, but it's one of the key things that is going on. And we've known this for decades, is that people need to have their septic systems pumped out, and that's the best way to extend the life of a, of a septic system. So, when and if the town of Arlington is ever able to provide septic processing, we hope we can for certain parts of town, so people. Hook up, because those may be areas where septic systems might fail or something like that, but the key thing is that everybody needs to just pump that. And so, and I did not know that before I was on the committee, so I'm figuring, other people don't know that either. So, um, I just, I think I put some kind of report about this in my last TA report, and I'll try to get you that old one. But I just really wanted to highlight it for the board about the public meeting, because not. But I just really wanted to highlight it for the board about the public meeting, because not everybody's at that, at that meeting. And Matt or Jamie or Dan, if you wanna um chime in about anything, but that's all I really have.
I answer that for just.
Yes, go right ahead, alright.
Um, you're on, I, I, what you said Cynthia, cleaning, pumping your septic tank is, is usual. But one of the bigger things for that, and, and I learned this when I worked at construction in the last few years of doing septic systems. Is they now make an F form filter that goes in your septic tank.
Right.
And, and it collects the fine.
Right.
Particles that may go out there, and that, to me, is, is bigger than even pumping your tank. Because it's, it's stopping anything from getting entered. Oh, I, I don't know.
Right, and that, and that. And that's, um, nowadays, they're putting in those risers, and they'll put this filter in the riser, and, and I have that, we have that at, at, at my house. And so, once you're, um, the guy pulls the riser and, and hoses out the filter, and then it, it, you don't have to pump it as often. And it keeps the F, the, 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 the material from getting out into the leach field. Because Mark, Mark was telling me about um how in his work he has found that sometimes you get this mass of material. This sort of forms at the bottom of the leach field so that water doesn't filter through anymore. I actually pursued that with the consultants, and they said that it's often made up of um chemicals from detergents. Refractants that take the stains off of, of, of clothing or grease off of foods and grease itself. And you can see how grease and chemicals would just make essentially almost like a plastic match. So any household is gonna have grease, any household is gonna have refractant, the filter can help. But to the extent that that stuff is in, was in the tank, that's where you wanna pump it out.
Yeah.
Because you can extend the life of your leach field if you can keep that dynamic from happening.
Mm-hmm.
So um, I meant to tell you that I did pursue that, and they said, he's absolutely right, you know, and that, and so I'm changing my behavior. I mean, I was, I never forbid any movement, but you just, there's a lot, there's a lot to it.
And any new system that's put in the state has required.
Right, but we have a lot of old.
Right, right, but I mean, that's been that way for the last.
Twenty years.
And ten anyway.
Yeah, so um, so for that, but so that's really good, but that's one of the things, like, there's a whole pamphlet that I can pass out. About these, these issues, and the key thing is for people to start maintaining their own private infrastructure better. And how can the town help them do that?
So what vehicle we have to get that information?
Well, we're gonna have.
We're gonna have a meeting, and I have the pamphlets, and then we're gonna talk about it again at town meeting.
Okay.
So, you know.
But we're not gonna do a full presentation at town meeting.
No, no.
You know, that would be um, as we redesign the website. Like, that's really a good opportunity to get that kind of information out there.
So people will come to the website.
Exactly, yeah, we want to have a whole launch party.
Yeah.
Okay, town administrator report, um, you guys have it, I don't really have a lot to add. Um, to what I said there, but I would encourage, um, you know, I don't wanna prolong anything. With more discussion unless anybody has questions about it, I did try to give you memos about different things. And then also talk about other things I spent my time on, so that you know what I'm, what I'm, what I'm doing.
Yep, no, it was very informative, thank you Cynthia.
So I understand we have an executive shorting test accessible? That may look in a warrant first, it'll be short, I think.
So that brings us to warrants, we're gonna start with the Arlington Water Department warrants. And check warrant report W D two zero, W D twenty. In the total amount of seven thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, we've got some voucher repairs on here, uh, and Otter Creek Engineering, um. Invoice for our most significant items. Make a motion to approve check warrant report W D twenty in the total amount of seven thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second. Motion made by Matt and second by Jamie to approve check warrant report W D twenty. The water department in the total amount of seven thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. All those in favor, sign goodbye by saying no.
Hi.
Bye.
And that brings us to the town of Arlington warrants and.
Just add a, a note.
Yep.
Um, the total, um, this our town um warrant is larger than the one that was emailed you. Because bills came in um today, that Janet felt we really needed to put on them, so fire department bills and. That we really needed to pay, so this term is bigger, because we added that, and I'm not sure any of you would have necessarily noticed that. But I just want a full disclosure.
Yep. Uh, thank you Cynthia, and yes, this is a town of Arlington check report, uh, check warrant report number nineteen. Uh, total amount of seventy-four thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents. Um, some real notable items here, uh, Peckham Industries, uh, winter sand for twenty-six thousand and change. Uh, we got the uh fire department repeater repairs are now complete, and we have an invoice in there. For nine thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, and our town of Manchester dispatch service fees for the fire department. Uh, for twenty twenty, I believe that's for twenty twenty-six, and that's eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's over half of it right there.
Yeah, exactly, so those are the really significant items. Um, so I was, I'll make a motion to approve check warrant report number nineteen in the total amount of seventy-four thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars. And sixteen cents.
Second. Motion made by Matt and signed by Jamie to approve check warrant report number nineteen in the total amount of seventy-four thousand. One hundred twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents, all those in favor, signal five by saying no.
Hi.
Bye. And we have a shorter. And we need to establish the reason for the executive session.
Yes, yes.
As a.
I'll make a motion.
Personal matters.
I'll make a motion that a premature discussion of personnel matter would cause the municipality to suffer substantial disadvantage.
Second. Made by Matt and sent in by Jamie to establish the reason for the executive sessions of personnel matter. All those in favor, signify by saying no.
Hi, and I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for a discussion of said personnel matter. And to allow uh highway superintendent Mark to remain in the room.
Second. And the.
And the town administrator Cynthia Browning, sorry.
That's okay. All right, uh, motion made by Matt and signed by Jamie to enter into executive session to discuss said personal matter. And allow P A Browning and uh Mark Robinson, both former, to remain in the room. All those in favor, signify by saying no.
Hi.
Okay, I'm gonna stop recording, Janet, um, I will take down the information, uh, so you are off duty. Great, thank you, good night.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, we are back in regular session, it is ten eleven. And we are not making any decisions, so I will entertain a motion to return.
So much. Second.
Motion made by Jamie and signed by Matt.
We're here.
Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.
Okay.
Get some dinner.
So.
Get some sleep. Well, yeah.
What?
Pick up the kit.
Oh.
So I have to go to Jan right here.
Oh, nice.
They're sitting in the, I mean, not first, but.
Oh, okay. All right, which way do we go out?
Um, where's the car?
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Hi, Karen, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
I'm very excited.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm coming.